Welcome to the January fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen work session of the Bowling Board of Commissioners. We have two items on the work session today. The first up is discussion related to the Western Kentucky University proposal to assume ownership and maintenance for portions of Normal and State Street. Right away, Mr. DeFabo.
Yes, I believe Mr. John Osborne is here to make presentation on behalf of WKU or to introduce the principal, who will?
John?
Okay, thank you. You will recall Mayor Wilkman and members of council that in the past, university has worked with you to convert a street formerly known as Fifteenth Street into what we now know as College Heights Boulevard. This is a very similar concept. And today, I've asked Brian Russell from our planning, design, and construction department, who works with the university in capacities related to construction and master planning and so forth, to cover with you, an overview of what we have in mind, and I'll just turn it over to him.
Thank you and good afternoon. My name is Brian Russell, Director for Planning, Design, and Construction of Western. Have been working with Public Works, Melissa and Jeff, on a proposal that we'd like to present today of the ownership and maintenance of a portion of Normal and State Street. Prepared a slideshow here just to kind of give a few visuals of things we'd like to do. The primary purpose of this proposal is to improve the pedestrian safety and walkability in the proposed area that's going to be in this map. What I'd like to show is at the corner of Regent's Avenue going up Normal Street, and then this area right here, this actually turns into State Street, to the corner of College Heights Boulevard. And what I'd like to indicate on the overhead is that everything that's in yellow is WKU-owned properties that we have here. All of the one, two, to five parcels that are indicated are affiliated institutions or organizations that exist to support WKU students, staff, faculty, such as the Christian Student Fellowship. We have fraternity and sorority organizations. We have the Baptist Campus Ministries that are adjacent to and located on Normal Street. The parcels indicated in green are personal property owners here in Bowling Green, Kentucky. And what we had done is that we had sent out a letter indicating to them that we had interest in the same proposal, which that letter was submitted by Public Works, and we also, actually, the letter was sent by Western Kentucky University. And then we sent along this adjacent map and answered any questions. We did have one, Ms. Markram, who sent us a letter, and then we responded telling her that we would not close the road and some other of the details. And she seemed to be perfectly fine with that response. Things that we've done is, so far, we had a project about a year ago, we've been working with BGMU, replacing a old deferred high voltage project, which is forty-one sixty volts, which resulted in us taking that section of State Street and doing a lot of work. But crosswalks, on-street parking removal, roadway paving, bike lanes, wider sidewalks, four-way stop, a new bus stop has already been added. What you see in this photograph was what we had in two thousand and ten before we had started any improvements, putting in that high voltage. And you can see the cars, you can see the people, you can see a lot of vehicular traffic. You see our students walking up and down in its very congested area. After we finished our project on State Street, which was a high voltage project, you can now see that we have much improved wider sidewalks going on this lane, which before was very crowded, put our pedestrians and folks in harm's way of the vehicular traffic. We've added more visual crosswalks in more frequent areas on this area of campus. We've also improved the sidewalks and actually included a bike path on both sides for cyclists to do that on this section of street. But I think the main thing in this photograph is that you can really see the use of the pedestrian traffic. Why do we need to do this for this area? Bowling Green and Western have both grown over the years. We have added on-campus students over the last few years, about seven thousand more on-campus students. And as we have grown, there's been a real need. So we're trying to be proactive and propose these safety improvements on that corridor. These are things we'd like to do, improve lighting, wider sidewalks, improve crosswalks. We'd like to reduce the speed down to fifteen miles per hour. And we'd also like to put some additional bus-loading areas along that corridor so that we can get the bus off, have students load and unload onto a proper sidewalk. This is example of the improved types of lighting we would like to add down the corridor. It's a standard. City of Bowling Green's done that with corridor coming in off of I-65, which is a beautification process. I think some of you know that we're working with BGMU on that high voltage. We've got a phase that starts this next summer that will eliminate an old existing BGM substation, which we call Mimosa Substation. And actually, the light posts on the other side of this will actually start to come down, and we'll get things underground just on College Heights Boulevard. So we continue to make some of these improvements on our city streets and our, now, some of our Western streets. So I think it's, helps all people of Bowling Green. This is a photograph of a wider sidewalk, it's going down State Street, and you see where the project stopped in two thousand and ten, eleven. And then you can see the existing conditions we have as a sidewalk as we move down. And with the increased pedestrian traffic, it now allows everybody to continue on down. We are looking at just the right-of-way. We are looking at the sidewalk improvement going out to the street so that we would stay off of the adjacent properties, and it would be consistent with the top and the lower part of this corridor, which we see here. And then in this area here, it goes back to existing sidewalks that are currently there. These are some of the things that we propose to do as maintenance. We plan on maintaining the lighting, maintain the crosswalks, maintain the street signage and markings, includes painting the curbs, inspect and maintain the stormwater inlets, which is very important in today's maintenance issues that we have every day. Maintain asphalt and curbs. Western has already put new asphalt from College Heights Boulevard all the way down to the start of Normal. We continue to pick up litter, and we have the equipment to do that. We would continue to mow strips of grass in areas along and adjacent for beautification. We continue to sweep the streets. We would do snow and ice removal. We would continue to trim overhanging tree limbs to keep them through all the winds and the storms from potentially damaging pedestrians and vehicular traffic. Services that would continue along this corridor, as it does on College Heights Boulevard, police and fire response would remain the same to existing customers. Ambulance service would continue. Utility service and providers will remain the same. Cable service, telephone service, et cetera, along that corridor would not be interrupted. Garbage and recycling service remain, and also leaf removal and sticks that are provided to the city parcels that remain in that corridor. That was just a very quick overview of that, and we would appreciate y'all's consideration for that segment of ownership to Western Kentucky University.
Mr. Denny?
A couple of questions, Mr. Russell. And I'm sure you have, and I'm certainly not questioning anything here other than just for informational purposes. Any cuts that you have in your asphalt or black top, are you going to develop, you may have already, but develop some type of relationship with the utility companies for them to prepare those cuts after they're made? And who's going to check off on that to make sure they do?
Okay. Currently, on our campus, that happens daily. And we have the City of Bowling Green, Atmos, Water, AT&amp;T. We have a tremendous amount of existing utilities that crisscross intermittently, and they're seamless to Western Kentucky University and the city. So anytime we make those cuts, they happen on our property, they happen on the city streets. And then, yes, we do go back and we do inspect that. We make sure they're plated, make sure they're safe, and then we properly make sure when it's time that they actually get sealed and done properly, so at the end of the project. And it really doesn't matter who is actually doing that work. That has always been historically their responsibility to get it put back in place, but we typically work with each other very seamlessly, taking care of those, make sure they're done properly.
And on schedule. One of the concerns that I've had over the years, and I've talked about it with the city manager, and is that utility companies, when they make their respective cuts, I have concern about them not filling them up or not putting the black top back in in a fashion that they should, as well as having a timetable for fixing that patch in the road. One of the things I think we're seeing here around town is there are a lot of cuts, and the utility companies are not back there until our staff, and this is only my observation, our staff contacts them, then they are there to fill the hole and supposedly roll the black top properly and so on, where it doesn't fall in after they leave.
I think one of the things that if you traveled our campus today, you'd notice that we have been able to make some real improvements to the existing asphalt in sections. For instance, College Heights Boulevard recently, Western, I think it was last summer, where we took out an existing Public Works ten-inch water main, been up there for seventy years. And during our project, we, instead of, you know, leaving it in place and having that happen, we were able to work in the project getting that replaced properly, putting back concrete because we were having bus traffic, et cetera, caused a lot of damage. And then a lot of our cuts that are made, getting it reasphalt during the summer months when it's right time to do that. And we've been very successful at doing that. So I think we've been pretty proactive in making it safe. We have concentrated on the last two summers, and it's, one of the things we do is for walkability and pedestrian safety. We've done approximately two hundred thousand dollars worth of work each summer just on sidewalks alone around campus. Again, we're an aging campus, and there was a lot of things that need to be taken care of. And so you've seen a real emphasis over the last ten years of us continually making these exterior walkable bikeway improvements around campus for safety. Very conscious.
Any other questions, discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Has there ever been any discussion on putting a sign, maybe at the beginning and at the end of those roads, saying these roads managed by Western Kentucky University instead of City of Bowling Green? I don't want us to be getting calls that when citizens aren't happy with that street, they think the city's not doing their job.
I've not heard, John. I've not heard any...
We've never been requested to do that, but I don't think it's anything out of the ordinary, maybe. We have the same problem with state roads as well. We get the calls for those and have to explain, so if it's something we want to look into, we can.
Anyone else?
One question that I might have. You say that one of your objectives here is to limit the amount of vehicular traffic or to cut it back a little bit?
No, that's not, I didn't say that. What I said was on the, we're going to reduce the speed.
Speed limit?
Yes. And by doing some of the things of what we've designed, it will slow the traffic down through the campus area where we have so many pedestrians. And that's not that uncommon, nor, and College Heights Boulevard now has been properly labeled and placered with signage for fifteen miles an hour. We have added islands, which are part of its beautification, but part of it is that it makes a person in a car slow down. And I think that's very important through this particular corridor.
Just wanted to add, as Brian said, we've been working closely with them for these proposed changes. And over the past probably five years, our staff has spent numerous hours trying to mitigate the volumes of, the volume of traffic versus the pedestrians there, because it's right on the edge of campus, our typical standards and how we like to do crosswalks doesn't fit. We don't typically like to do mid-block crossings. But as you know, when you go up and down through there, there's probably four, five, eight places where people need to cross, so if you don't mark it, they're going to cross anyway. So we've struggled with a way to bend our standards to fit their needs. And I think in reviewing this with him, I think we both win. I think we get a safer, more aesthetic, and more conforming corridor. I don't think if the, now that we've spoke to the property owners, I don't feel they're losing any kind of services. And it all kind of comes down to how we word the agreement. If it gets to that point, we can make that say, you know, and reassure these people that, you know, these things aren't going to happen. The road won't close. It'll continue to be open to the public. Your services will continue. So from our staff, we feel it's a good proposal, and I think today we're here to just get your thoughts, and, you know, if in agreement, what direction do we want to go in now?
Anyone have any objections moving forward with it?
What is the status of the properties that are in green? You just asking them for right-of-ways at the front of their property?
No, no, we're not. We just notified them that we were making this proposal, that Western Kentucky University would take ownership of this section of the roadway. And we're not proposing to, we've informed them of the improvements. We've informed them about the sidewalks that we would be going toward the street and not into their existing property. Wanted to let them know about their utility service and things, that we would maintain the curb cuts and the pavement. And our intentions is, we have a multi-phase project that will improve the lighting, improve the pavement, add areas to get, slow the traffic down, put the bus stops in, make it a safer place as we continue to have our, continue to have student enrollment increase. We don't see it going down, we only see it growing.
No access problems for those remaining six or seven property owners?
Absolutely none. No change.
Okay. All right. Unless anyone has an objection, I guess we'll sit on the next agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Mr. Osborne, appreciate you coming.
I want to thank Melissa and Jeff, because they did some due diligence prior to this meeting to make sure that we had a proposal that respected people in the neighborhood and took into consideration their opinions. So I want to thank them for that effort.
All right, the second item on the agenda is to, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Broderick, please come to the microphone, please.
Since no one has talked to me in the contrary to the assertions that have been made today.
I should have asked, I didn't know why you're here. Go ahead.
Their first green is your property, Mr. ...
No, I'm in seventeen sixty Normal, and I'm further down, at least if I understand the chart. I'm the next block down, I believe. Which would be down this way. My concern, and I came in just as the presentation was being made, is one, classically, you know, when we have planning and zoning issues or street matters, there are neighborhood meetings and contact that way. And I've had no contact. If I received a letter on this, it certainly didn't describe it this way. I did get a letter from Western saying that they were going to have something to do in this area. And quite frankly, it had to do with a zone change where they're going to move the, we're going to move the Kyle Mega House over to Chestnut Street. That has just recently been withdrawn. So that's the only notice I've gotten. My concern is simply a pure access matter, having owned that property, or my family's owned it for the last sixty-six years. And I'm concerned that they said they weren't going to close the street, but if you give them ownership of the street, what's to preclude them from doing that in the future, having had a prior experience with them about dispute on University Boulevard? Has that been addressed? I didn't hear it.
Just the question I asked with about access, I'll let Melissa come back and discuss.
In oh-six, well, first of all, the section on down won't be part of this agreement.
Now.
And that's what we're here today to talk about. The section in blue is what we're talking about, and if we mimic it, I wish Gene was here, to do the agreement like we did College Heights Boulevard, we can include language to keep it open in perpetuity. Yes, and I think it said it, I have that in my folder if we need it out. And we can address anything of that nature to keep that from happening in the future and the ...
Thank you. That does answer my question, and if that's just piece of language I'd like to see. I not only hear from myself, I'm also here for residents of Chestnut Street that are concerned about the overflow of traffic over to them. So that it's something, again, that if there's, if there's been dialogue, it hasn't been made to these folks, so...
If I understood correctly, they only send a letter to the property owners adjacent to Normal.
And I think it impacts more than that when you have those questions. That's, that's all I inquire about this time. Would you, would consider this, what if your next regular meeting, which would be when?
February.
February fifth?
Fifth.
Okay. Thank you very much.
David, your property, University Boulevard is where?
University Boulevard would be right here. I believe, I'm, I may be off a little bit dimensionally, then, the property owned would be right here.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broderick. Appreciate it. All right, let's move to the next item, which is continuation of a discussion regarding enforcement requirements under the Americans with Disabilities Act regarding resealing or restriping of commercial parking lots.
This issue, Mayor, was sunshine about a month ago in a work session. We were asked by the commission to have staff talk with a number of restriping companies about the protocols and rules of engagement they used to make that decision. Brent led in that effort, so he's going to lead in our presentation today.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, Mr. City Manager. As Kevin said, we talked about this, I believe, November. The Christmas holidays kind of threw me off, so I can't remember what day, any day is, it seems like. But I think it was November. We wanted to come back and provide you with some more information on it, from my research over this period of time, just so that you are aware of what all the implications of ADA are. So my research does include the Kentucky Building Code, which we enforce through our building division, the local zoning ordinance, which is also enforced through building, and also through code enforcement, and then the ADA, which we do not enforce, and then the conversations with industry professionals. So that's where the background of all this. And also, anytime it seems that I go to a store or go anywhere out to eat, I notice all the handicap parking now. So I pay attention to everything. So some of it is also just from going through your daily life and paying attention to the things that are out there. So talk about, there's two parts of handicap parking. There's the enforcement part, which is governed by KRS and enforced by the Police Department. That part will not be discussed today. That is really at the direction of the Police Department. I have no involvement in that process, and I'm sure most of you are familiar with how that process works. Our part today is really talking about parking development. And our role now is just on the development of new parking, currently. That's all we do, is handling new parking. That is handled through a, either a building permit or a paving permit, and we'll talk about more of those later. So the Kentucky Building Code adopted ANZI 117.1-2003. This is the accessibility code that is incorporated into the Kentucky Building Code, which we adopt as our local building code standard. And this is also adopted in the International Code Council as the official accessibility standard for new construction and alterations. This is not ADA. These are separate. ANZI is a trade group, just like ICC. It changes about every three years, so it stays more up to date with technology. ADA is federal law. It was issued by Congress through the American with Disabilities Act in nineteen ninety-one, so it is federal law. It gets updated about once every twenty years. So they are not the same thing. However, their standards are parallel. So whenever I talk about these things, I want you to understand that they are similar, but they are not the same thing. Parking is just a small part of accessibility. Accessibility takes into account every aspect of a building. If you take into a new construction, it will take into account where your guardrails are in your bathroom, how high your sink is. Everything in that building falls under accessibility. Parking is a small part of that. Just to give you a visual, this is the ADA handbook, all right? However many hundreds of pages. This, five or six pages, is parking. This, five or six pages back here, or two pages, is the designs. So these are the standards. This is ADA. These two are parking. So we're talking about a very small part of the overall ADA law. ADA and ANZI both lay out how many, what they look like, and where they're at. And we'll talk about those in more detail, and I'll show you some examples of those so that you can actually kind of visualize, instead of me just telling you numbers. And we evaluate this at the plan review stage, and then confirm it at the building inspection stage, so actually in the field. Plan review is really just looking at lines on paper. Building inspection is physically going and looking at the site. Local zoning ordinance tells us how many spots are required. And this is based on use, size, number of employees. There's a lot of factors that tell an engineer and architect how many parking spaces they have to have for that building, for that new construction. And I'll show you an example of that. And also, a standard parking size in zoning ordinance is nine feet wide and eighteen feet deep. This is from the zoning ordinance. And this shows, based on the use, how many parking spaces are required. So if you have a, let me find an easy one here, so I can do the math in my head. Medical office, health clinic, pharmacy, one space per two hundred square feet. It's pretty simple. You've got a twenty thousand square foot building, ten spaces, you divide it out.
The size of the building.
Size of the building. Or you look at some of these, where's a restaurant, one space per employee, that has been added. This is the updated parking requirements under the new zoning ordinance that was approved in September. So these have recently changed. So it's based on the size of the building, the use of the building, and the number of employees. That says how many are required. This is the ADA standard to tell you how many ADA spots are required. So this takes into account, how many spots do you have? Based on how many you have, this tells you how many ADA spots you have to have, and then how many must be van-accessible, and how many are standard, what I'll call standard spots. So I'll give you an example. We have a hundred parking spots at a building. They have to have four ADA spaces. At least one of those must be van-accessible, and the other three are standard handicap parking spots, okay? And we'll come back to that example in a minute.
And those figures could be different than the others, the square footage of the building?
Yes. But whatever this tells you you have to have, or whatever you end up putting in, this tells you how many ADA spots you have to have. So, and I'll show you an example of what I'm talking about here in just a second. So this right here, this is a copy of plans that were submitted for a restaurant that was recently built in Bowling Green. This is what we get at the plan review stage. This is on the site plan drawing. If you look right here, total parking, one space per four seats. They have a hundred and fifty-nine seats. This is under the old standard, a hundred and fifty-nine seats. So they are required to have forty spaces. Since they have forty, then they have to have two ADA spaces. Now however, the builders of this, the developers of this, decided that forty spaces is not enough for what they need. So they're going to put in eighty-five spaces. So now that they've went up to eighty-five spaces, they have to have four ADA spaces. So we go back, eighty-five is in between... is in between seventy-six and a hundred, so they have to have four, one van, and three standard. So this tells, this is what they're actually putting in. This is the requirement. So this is a copy of their site plan. So now they have a standard space, a standard space, and then these two are actually van accessible spaces. So they have their four spaces, and at least one is van accessible. So they meet the standard. And this is on a new construction. So this is what we see as projects come in. This is what we review. Now, there are some additional requirements in ADA. Ten percent of patient visitor parking spots at outpatient facilities should be ADA compliant, and twenty percent at rehab facilities. So we go back to our previous example, not the restaurant, but of a hundred space parking lot. And we said that they had to have four, okay? Now, if that parking lot was for an outpatient facility, they have to have ten. If that's for a rehab physical therapy facility, they have to have twenty. And the reason is, it's pretty straightforward, if you're taking rehab or physical therapy, chances are you have difficulty walking. I mean, it's pretty straightforward there. So this is some additional requirements based on the use, and this is in ADA and also in ANZI, that is important to talk about. Now, we'll talk about design. This is what I call a standard design, just a standard handicap parking. You would have an eight-foot wide space and a sixty-inch access aisle, and then you could have another eight-foot space. Here's a picture of that. You'd have an eight-foot space, a sixty-inch access aisle, and an eight-foot space. The pictures that you see on here are not from here. In case you didn't notice, Bowling Green does not have palm trees.
Yeah, I noticed.
I've not found those anywhere, so these are not local pictures. I took these off the internet, so as to not call out any businesses.
Brent, can I interrupt you there?
Yes, sir.
Does that five-foot wide strip in the middle service two different?
Two.
Van accessible spots?
No. These are standard spots.
Okay.
These are standard spots. And I'll talk about van accessible next. This access aisle would service this spot and this spot. So if you look at the actual picture up here, this access aisle services this spot and this spot. And then it kinda fades away, but there's another spot, another access aisle, and then another spot. So they're sharing that access aisle. And that gives the user the ability to roll a wheelchair in there, open the door, those types of things. That's what that access aisle's for. So these are for standard parking spots. You move to a van accessible, there's two different design types. I don't have a catchy name for this one, I do for the next one. This one would require an eight-foot spot, which would be a standard spot, and then another sixty-inch access aisle, and then an eleven-foot spot. And this would be a van accessible spot. Only this spot would be van accessible. Reason for that, typically vans have side lifts, so they have to have room to drop that lift. Eleven-foot spot gives them the ability to drop that lift, come out, and then use the access aisle to enter the building. Now, here's an example of that. You can see a standard space, sixty-inch, and then a much wider spot over here. So this would be the van accessible spot. This would be a standard spot. Yes, sir?
Is it unsociable or illegal to, if you don't have a van, but have a sticker, to park in a van only?
I think it would be more unsociable than illegal.
Okay.
Because it's still a handicap spot. So this is one example of a van accessible spot. Here's another one. This one I call the three-eighths model, because you can have, on the last one, we had eleven-foot spot for a van. This one, you just have an eight-foot spot for a van, and an eight-foot spot over here, but you have an eight-foot access aisle. And here's a picture. Eight foot, eight foot, eight foot. I call that one the three-eighths. And that's what we had in the restaurant example from the plan that I had earlier.
So both of those are van accessible?
Both of those are van accessible. And the reason is, you still have the same amount of feet. Because in this one, you have eight, five, and eleven, is twenty-four feet. This one, you have eight, eight, and eight, is twenty-four feet. It just depends on where you put the line. But it's still the same twenty-four feet overall width. It still gives the user the ability to drop the lift, and access it with a wheelchair, and leave the parking spot. So these are the types of designs that I want you to be aware of. Now, the next part is location. And like with any law, it gives you an interpretation. And accessible parking spaces must be located on the shortest accessible route of travel to an accessible facility interest. That route of travel, or the shortest accessible route, will depend on the design of the building. It might not be at the very front door of the building. The way the building is laid out, the way the parking lot's laid out, the elevation changes, there might be factors where that accessible route is to the side of the building. That will depend on, there are a whole lot of factors and variables that would go into that, and how the designer, the developer, the contractor, the architect, the engineer lay all that out. So I want to talk about a couple of different parking lot designs. I named these, so these are not trade names. First one, I'll call a separated parking lot. This is what you see in a lot of your big box style developments, where you have no parking. The store would be up here. You have no parking up here. You just have the fire lane signs where people park there, run in, get something, run back out. And then your, all your parking is separated from the building out here. So there's no parking in front of the store. So it gives you a little bit more space. These are larger projects, larger parking lots. You have more space to design your accessible route. The other type would be a combined. This is more restaurant, small business, convenience stores, fast food, things like that, where your parking is combined to the building. This limits your ability to get your accessible route, if you have elevation changes, things like that. This is a little bit more cumbersome, just depending on all those factors. And, you know, and it depends on case-by-case basis. Now, as you go past that, we'll talk about existing conditions. And this is, the rest, the previous part was really to kinda give you an idea of ADA, what the spots look like, what the rules are, things like that. Existing conditions, this is what's actually going on out there. And this is more from my analysis of just paying attention to things, looking at things, going back and pulling old building permits, old plans, things like that. Your corporate, large businesses generally don't have the design issues. You know, the names that you see and that you recognize every day, that you would see in every town across America, you're not gonna find the issues. Their corporate structure allows them the ability to have people on staff to make sure that they don't have those issues. They have to protect themselves against ADA lawsuits. They have the people that can do that. Whenever you get into small businesses, more local businesses and older buildings, they don't have that ability. They don't have a corporate headquarters that can send a team out to evaluate all these things. So that's where I found more issues, is in locally-owned lots, locally-owned buildings, local stores, as opposed to the much larger stores. And the issues that I've found don't really relate to the number of spots, but it's more the access aisle. I've found a lot of areas where there is no access aisle. That access aisle that I talked about has to be five feet or eight feet, depending on what type of space. A lot of them are just blue painted parking spots. And that's how they are. Now, however, in talking with the industry professionals, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later, they tell me that when a lot is resealed or restriped, it goes back in the same direction. It's really the owner's choice, but they just kinda paint back over what is there. It's their way of estimating what the cost for that would be, so that they understand what the layout is. And this, now we're talking about existing lots moving forward. And I have no way to disprove that, approve that, anyway whatsoever. There's no data, there's no information to support that. So that is what they tell me, that is what I have to go on. And the owner of the property has final authority. The owner of the property is the one responsible for the property, and it's his job to make the final decision on the design and layout. Now, talking with the industry professionals, I found that it's a very small group. There's only a couple of companies in town that do this type of work. Because we're talking about commercial sealing and striping. If you broaden it out to having your driveway resealed, it's a little larger, but we're talking about a very small group here. And talking with them, I found that there's probably a hundred to a hundred and fifty lots restriped in the city limits every year. Going back and pulling some building permit data, there's approximately fifty to a hundred lots built each year. So in five years, we could expect a hundred and fifty to two hundred, just because it's just gonna continually grow over time, restriped each year. So that is a number to keep in mind as we go through some of the other slides. There we go. It's a very short turnaround time. The guys tell me, they get a couple, three days' notice. I need you out here this weekend. We're gonna be closed for the weekend. I need you to get it out here and get it restripped, resealed, and get it done. I need to open up Monday morning. Average lot, somewhere in the forty to sixty spot range. Of course, you're gonna have some of your larger stores that are much bigger, but there's fewer of those, so that brings your averages down. Lots generally restriped about once every five years, depending on traffic. If you're a convenience store, you got a lot of traffic coming through, a bank, things like that, it might be faster. If you're more of an office, where you just have your people come in, they leave for lunch, they go home in the evening, you don't get that constant twenty-four hour traffic, you can stretch that out a little bit. And it's a very seasonal work. It's April through October. They tell me that the ground temperature has to be about fifty-five degrees for the paint to stick, and the ceiling to stick. So you're talking about, you know, depending on the year. Some years it might be March, some years it might be November, but as a range, April to October, which is traditionally our normal building season also. In talking with them, I found them to be very knowledgeable about the ADA requirements. They were, without me questioning them, they were spouting off the number per, the size requirements, things like that. I found them to be very knowledgeable about what the requirements are. Now, after saying all that, I think it's important to look at, because the issue that we discussed before was, do we want to take on that burden of enforcing the ADA standard?
Before you go there, if I may, and if I'm ahead of you, you can tell me, did you go to any of the places that Mr. Melton had identified?
I went back and looked at some of the previous complaints that Mr. Melton had sent in.
Right.
And had reviewed some of those.
And you're finding?
The ones that I reviewed were in compliance with what I found here, yes.
Okay.
Is there any other questions before I continue? Okay. The previous conversation was concerning, what do we want to do? I do not believe, nor did Gene believe, and he's not here today to defend me, that we have a responsibility to enforce ADA on existing lots. I believe that we have a responsibility to enforce ANZI on new construction, and make sure that those are meeting the standard. On existing lots, I do not believe that we have that responsibility. So I did want to give you some options to consider, to move forward with. One model that we'd come up with was what I'll call the code enforcement model. And if you think of code enforcement, and what we do is, we look at existing property as it is, and whether or not it meets the standard. So that's what this would be. Sorry. Where we would pass an ordinance, giving people a grace period, you know, and that would be up to you all, one year, two year, five years, whatever, to comply. We would still, this would affect every parking lot in the city limits, to make sure that they meet that standard, excluding government entities, just because I don't believe that we have the authority to enforce this on Western, or the state, or the federal government, things like that. And we would also create a striping permit, just so we could track and have the information on who has already done it during the grace period, so we knew that, at the end of the grace period, that there would be no enforcement action on them. And then if people do not meet it by the grace period, then there would be fines, just like we do through code enforcement. We'd write citations, fine them until they came into compliance. This has, yes, sir? You're first.
You're saying here that if I own a parking lot, I built my parking lot, a building and parking lot, six years ago, that I built it the way the law says it's to be built, and you're gonna come and tell me that it doesn't meet codes now, but it did back then? Met all the ANZI laws and all the other laws, and you're gonna tell me now that the city has passed an ordinance, and I've got to upgrade my parking lot in order to meet that?
That's what this model would do.
We're not saying, we're not recommending it. This is just one of three.
I know you're not. I know you're not recommending.
But you voiced the option correctly.
Right. I just have a problem with it.
I understand.
And I agree. The city manager and I talked about that, how unwieldy that would be to try to attempt that, so.
But it is within your...
You're right on target with that.
Within your purview, if you... This is my least favorite option. This puts a great demand on my staff, very much on the front end. I mean, I have no way of knowing how many parking lots are in the city limits. But if you look at how many are restriped, and, you know, you start scaling that up, this is by far my least favorite judge. So I understand. But I think it's important to at least look at it as an option in comparison.
But the analogy would be that it was put in properly to begin with, or would never have received a permit?
It could, it could have been put in properly in nineteen fifty-five.
Right.
I mean, we're talking about properties around town that have been here for as long as I can remember. And no, I'm not that old, but you still go back twenty-five, thirty years.
Right.
That was well before ADA was a law. So that would still come into this. This would bring all the lots into the standard within a shorter amount of time, but it would not handle accessible routes or interior accessibility. So this would just be talking about the paint on the pavement, okay? Just make sure that y'all are understanding that. This is just the paint on the pavement. This would not talk about the sidewalk of the building, what the ramp slope is. This is just the paint on the ground. The other model...
Brent, before you get to that...
Yes, sir.
I should have asked you this a second ago. You talked, you and Gene have agreed, and I think it's the fact that we're not responsible for enforcing this, then through your research, who is responsible for enforcing?
That'll be in an upcoming slide.
Okay.
If you can wait just a few slides.
Absolutely.
All right. The next one, what I call the permitting model. This would be similar to our building process. It does not affect existing lots unless they restripe. So if the owner makes the decision to restripe, then they would have to, either the contractor or the owner would have to come in and get the permit, and then meet the standards at that point. So we'd create a striping permit for existing lots. The new lots are already covered through the paving and building permits. Yes, sir?
Send striping permit, send...
In both.
Are you saying that they would be required to come up to two thousand thirteen standards, or they're just remarking what they had from nineteen fifty-five?
Under this one, then they would have to come up to two thousand and ten standards.
Which would be more...
Could be more stringent than what they have.
More expense.
Because if they're just gonna stripe back what they have, then there's no reason to have the permit either, in my view of it.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
This does have some additional issues. It takes a much longer time to get all those parking lots in to meet the standard. I believe, you know, a ten to fifteen-year window to get all those parking lots cycled through, to get them permitted, to get them done. The staff demand is spread over time, so, you know, that does reduce that. However, as I said before, talking with the industry professionals, it's a very short window. You know, they might only get a couple of days' notice. This isn't a building that we're talking about where we have months of planning and all these meetings. You know, this is a phone call, and hey, I need an estimate, I need you to start on Friday. So that adds another element to the permitting process, the internal process of that. And this would only relate to the restriping of the lots. Once again, this is only the paint on the ground. This doesn't affect the access to the building, the sidewalks, once you get inside, the bathrooms, anything like that. So the last model would be the Department of Justice model. And Commissioner Walter, if you asked who has the responsibility, the Department of Justice has the responsibility for enforcing the ADA. I've said this last time, I said it this time. I don't think that we have that responsibility. Twenty-four CRF Part Thirty-Six, Subpart E, Section Five-O-two, A through C, says the Department of Justice shall enforce the American with Disabilities Act. It is their responsibility to enforce this. Under this model, citizens would make complaints directly to the Department of Justice, either the state office or the national office. The Department of Justice would then have to take on the responsibility of investigating that, and then pursuing that either through a civil remediation, through a lawsuit, or some type of injunctive action. This would take into account the paint, the access, the sidewalk, the interior of the building. This would encompass this. Whereas the two models that I described would just encompass the two few pages that I discussed earlier. So this is much more inclusive to the entire ADA. Now, yes, sir?
You're saying we don't have the responsibility, but we could elect to choose that responsibility, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And that raises the interesting question, if we would enforce it, the person being enforced against, would he have standing to say that we have no jurisdiction, and thus...
We would have to enforce it by adoption of a local ordinance. So we would be enforcing a local ordinance.
Would his good argument be, despite your ordinance, you don't have the authority to have an ordinance?
I don't believe so. I mean, that's a Gene question. Gene's not here. The City of Louisville has had an ordinance for some time, that I can provide you with a copy with. I don't have one with me today, but the City of Louisville does have one. So it has been done on a local level.
So they elect...
But until the commission passes an ordinance, I don't feel like I have the ability to go out and enforce something from the feds.
Did you talk with anybody at the Department of Justice?
No, I have not.
Or the Human Rights Commission locally?
No, I have not. To move forward, because this is another part of this, and we've kinda talked about the models, if you all do decide to do an ordinance, this is law. Law is always interpretive. And if... And if you go to the ADA and you look up, ADA kicks in for new construction or alteration. So I think it's important to understand the definition of an alteration. If you read, and I'm sorry that it is so wordy, I know you all have a copy of it, and I'm gonna read it to you, and I apologize, I hate to do those types of things, but I do want you to get some of this. An alteration, as defined by ADA, a change to a building or facility that affects or could affect the usability of the building, or facility, or portion thereof. Alterations include, but are not limited to, remodeling, renovation, rehabilitation, reconstruction, historic restoration, resurfacing of circulation paths or vehicular ways, changes or rearrangement of the structural parts or elements, and changes or rearrangements in the planned configuration of walls and full-height partitions. Normal maintenance, re-roofing, painting, or wallpapering, or changes to mechanical and electrical systems are not alterations unless they affect the usability of the building or facility. And that's important to understand as we move forward on the next couple of slides. And I want to give you an example that's not a parking lot. You take a bathroom. We all understand what a handicap accessible bathroom looks like. You have the guardrails, you have the wets, you have the larger stall, those types of things. If you have a public restroom facility that does not meet ADA, you don't have to upgrade it until you alter it. Now, under this definition, if your toilet breaks and you go in and replace a new toilet, I don't believe that that's an alteration. If your sink breaks and you've replaced the faucet, that's not an alteration. You're not affect, that is normal maintenance. Okay? So that would not trigger. Now, however, you go to opening up a wall, then you have to go the whole gamut. So it's like, kind of, once you step through the door, you have to go all the way into the room. But in the bathroom example, just changing out the toilet, just changing out the faucet, that's not stepping into the door. Now, that's important, this part down here in bold is important to remember as we move through. So I went through and I found a question answered by the U.S. Access Board, which is a federal agency for access, and yes, it's the federal government, so they have fifteen agencies for everything. I'm used to it, so it's part of what I do. And this was the question, is the restriping or resurfacing of a lot considered an alteration? Once again, I'll have to read it. According to the definition of alteration, normal maintenance is not considered an alteration unless the usability of the lot is affected. For example, if a lot is to be resurfaced or it's planned reconfigured, accessible spaces must be provided as part of the alteration. However, work that is primarily maintenance, such as repainting, existing striping, may not trigger a requirement for accessible spaces. Although the work undertaken may not be technically considered an alteration, accessible spaces should be provided where the work by its nature makes the addition of such spaces possible. Yes, that's a federal answer. What I see it as is, if you go back and you put in the paint, it's maintenance. If you have the ability to go and add, then you should do so. So this is their answer to their question. Here's another one. Are accessible spa, yes, sir?
Do that again, that wasn't clear.
All right, sorry, getting a little dry down.
You don't have to read it, just give the interpretation.
If you go back and you're painting over the lines that are there...
Okay.
That's maintenance.
All right. When is it changed from alteration or something more in maintenance?
If you have the ability to reconfigure, then you should do so, but there's no requirement. However...
Go ahead.
If you go to change the grade, change the overall layout of the parking lot, then that is an alteration. You're altering the flow of the parking lot. Restriping, resealing is just a top coat of the parking lot. We all understand how the gravel base, the asphalt base, this is just the very top couple of centimeters of that parking lot.
So there's an if and a must statement involved in that?
Yes.
If you can do it, you should do it. If you change something else, you must do it.
Right. And this is important because I believe, I believe this is important because after the conversation with the strippers here in town, they tell me they're going back over what's there. I don't believe that they have went and researched this and found this to have this answer to give me, because I've been looking at this stuff for weeks, and I just found this the other day. The other one that you have there is, are accessible spaces required in existing parking lots and facilities? And that's called ADAG, is the Design Guidelines. Establishes minimum requirements for new construction or alterations. However, existing facilities not being altered may be subject to requirements for access. Title III of ADA, which covers the private sector, requires the removal of barriers in places of public accommodation where it is readily achievable. And that word is used throughout ADA, so you can define it how you wish, to do so. This requirement is addressed by regulations issued by the Department of Justice. Under these regulations, barrier removal must comply with ADAG requirements to the extent that it is readily achievable to do so. For example, if when restriping a parking lot to provide accessible spaces, it is not readily achievable to provide the full number of accessible spaces required by ADAG, a lesser number may be provided. The requirement to remove barriers, however, remains a continuing obligation. What is not, what is not readily achievable at one point may be readily achievable in the future. Barriers would be some type of obstacle, a boullard, steps, those are barriers. So that is not, that is a physical, something physical in the path to prevent someone, either on crutches and a wheelchair, from accessing that space. That is a barrier. That is ADA. It is federal law. I don't believe that the feds have a clear decision on whether or not striping, or restripe, or resealing is considered an alteration or maintenance. If you all want to move forward with an ordinance, we can begin work on that, but I do not believe currently we have the authority or the responsibility to enforce ADA standards outside of the building permit process through the incorporation of ANSI in the Kentucky Building Code. I'm here for any questions. If I get tongue-tied, I apologize. Yes, sir?
If somebody redoes a parking lot, and I mean by regrading a parking lot, there's a building permit required for that, a grading permit?
Yes, sir. There'd be a grading and paving permit.
And it would, it would trigger that at that time?
Yes, sir.
But right now, somebody's just sealing and striping, putting it back like it was is fine?
That's correct. And I think, of course, Mr. Melton's here, and he can speak also, but I think that was part of his concerns to you all and to us was the restriping of parking lots. You know, there is an option out there, it's just up to you all to decide how you want us to proceed. And I'm here to listen to any comments from the crowd, or any questions from you all.
Anybody have any questions?
But you're saying, if, even if they're restripping, you're saying that the law is really unclear as to whether they have to, have to be compliant with the...
The way I read that is, if you're going directly over what was there, then you're okay. But if you start messing with that some, that's when it starts getting gray area. Where it starts to become more black and white is if you're tearing up the parking lot, regrading the parking lot, putting in drainage, things like that. That's when you're, that's when you're altering the parking lot.
And most of the time, it's just simply re-striping.
Yeah. It's, to me, it's just like, if any of you have owned a home with a blacktop driveway, every few years, you gotta call the guy out, or you get the bucket and the brush out, and start sealing the driveway. It's part of maintenance.
And in any case now, if someone has a complaint, there's a vehicle for them to use, and that's the Department of Justice?
Yes, either the state or the national office.
That already exists.
Yes, sir. And you can go on the ADA homepage, and I've read through several cases where they have brought suit against private businesses related to ADA accessibility issues. And what you find is, there are some parking issues, but the brunt of the issues are related to the interior of the building. Those types of things.
Related to what?
The interior of the building, or the barriers. You know, you have a sidewalk that has a three-foot step to it, that would be a barrier. You know, you don't have a ramp, those types of issues.
Bruce, you were talking about the Human Rights Commission. Would this be, in your opinion, is this something that would go to them?
It has in the past.
Has.
Now, I don't believe that spacing has been brought up to the city's attention in the last many years, and that's evidenced by the fact that we didn't know to send them to the Human Rights Commission. So, you know, I think we've taken care of what Mr. Melton had brought to us, although the Human Rights Commission has dealt with that in the past.
And the Human Rights or any other agency that would be named, the same guidelines would apply, and it's no different than the way it is right now. Am I correct? In other words, it's pretty simple, even for somebody like me. If I want to reseal and my lot out there, I can go out and do it, repaint it, as long as I don't bring a bulldozer in there and fix it to where it can drain a different way than it already is draining. Once I do that, then I've got to comply.
And now, I would add one thing to that. If you remove handicap parking, I think that would be against ADA. So I do want to make that clear. That even though you're restriping, because you would not then be restriping in the exact fashion that it was. So I think it would be in violation of ADA to remove spots.
Yeah. You put it back, if I put the spots back where they were located to begin with, then I've complied.
As long as, as long as you don't go under the minimum number required. I think that needs to be said too, because I'll give you, for instance, we talked about the other rules for physical therapy places and things like that. Say a physical therapy place has been in this building, and they built it, and so they've got twenty spots out there. Well, now somebody else comes in and is occupying this building, well, they don't have the requirement, the same requirement to have twenty spaces. So they could go to their required number, they could remove those spaces, but they're still within the required number.
I understand.
And that's just a, you know, an example. I have no real world of that.
But who verifies when they repave that they didn't remove spots?
When they reseal or restripe?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Nobody.
So they, in fact, could go from eight spaces down to six, and we wouldn't know.
Right. We have no permitting process for that, so there is no verification of that. That's the responsibility of the owner, because if he does do that, then he is subject to fines and civil liabilities from the Department of Justice. So that's his responsibility.
Mr. Kegel is here too, by the way.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any other questions from the commission before we open it up? Does anyone have anything they'd like to add to it? Mr. Melton?
I'd like to just make a few comments. First of all, any ANSI standard in any field of work is subservient to the ADA law. I believe the ADA law is over whatever ANSI standards are written. Another thing, when you said van accessibility, in the ADA law, they have a van accessible, wide crosshatched area, where he showed an example of a van using part of their parking space and the access aisle for the car. But the ADA law has something different. They have the real wide van access aisle for a van parking space that's required. I wanted to comment that the places that I turned in, I know some of them are compliant now, but I know some of them are not compliant. Another thing, the ADA law requires the parking spots to be the, the handicap access parking spots to be the closest to the door, and an access aisle from the vehicle to the door. There's several places around town that have it farther away from the door. And I'll mention about restriping, I have seen some places that do take the handicap, some of the handicap parking out of it when they restripe. And so they have not just painted over the old handicap parking. That's true at the mall, for example.
I'm sorry, did you say the malls not in compliance?
That's right. I have, I have, there's two places. One is over in front of Dillard's on the Gospel Road side. They have four places. The curb and the grass strip is on one side of the handicap parking spot. There's another handicap spot right there beside it with no access aisle, and there's four of them back up, there's two back up to each other, so there's four spots together. The same thing is true over Chuck E. Cheese.
Would, would, and I'm not, I don't know anything about what you're talking about, those spaces, but from what Mr. Childers just said, they're required to have X number of spots, depending on the number of total parking spots, that they're not required to have them at every front door entrance to it, but they could, like if there was a thousand car parking required, and they needed a hundred of them, they could put all a hundred of them at the front door to the mall. Is that correct?
Yeah. Or on, it does also provide, I don't know that it's an exception, I guess an inclusion for multiple tenant buildings. So if you had a long strip center, and that total parking lot, say, was a thousand, and you had to have forty, that you could spread that forty out. So you could spread that forty out so that, you know, because people are gonna go to each pace, each place individually. So it does allow you to spread that.
I guess what I'm saying is, that's what the mall was done, tried to spread them out.
Yes.
But they have the total number of spots available.
But I think what Mr. Melton is talking about is, the access aisle in between the spots then feeds to an additional access aisle, I wish I had a way to draw this, that does not go to the building, it goes into one of the curb planners?
No. My point was that there is no access aisle, that they're, and they're just painted with the blue on the pavement, but there's no access aisle. That's my point.
And they're required to have an access aisle on every parking spot?
They are required to have an access aisle. And the access aisles are the biggest issue that I found in going out and looking at existence. So I'm not disagreeing with him. I've found several locations, and I'm not gonna call them out, where there were no access aisles present.
Was that the requirement in seventy-six or seven when they built the mall?
Well, the point is, they've restrypped their parking lots several times since then. Yeah, okay. They've restrypped their parking lots within the last three or four years, and they did it, you know, the law is twenty years old, and then that really refers to the Civil Rights Act back in nineteen sixty-four, sixty-five. And some places were enforcing handicap parking back in nineteen seventies. So, you know, people have had the education. And let me just point out too, that about the issue of a place that is less than twenty years old, for example, let me just say this. People who buy real estate have to look at all the laws that affect that property. And it's their responsibility, if they didn't, to know about the ADA law whenever they bought the property. Now, I know there's some people that are grandfathered in back then, and I realize that. But, you know, if they restrip their parking lot, I mean, there's one place that I have been a few times where there is no van access, no van parking lobby, no van parking spot, but it's just a narrow one for a car, and if a van comes with a side ramp, there's just no place for them to park. Let me just, I want to say too, that what I'm saying affects the livability for handicap people in bowling green too. And the Civil Rights Act was made for all these people to have equal access, equal access to places, at any place that is open to the public, whether it's a business or a government agency. Now, about the time period, the time process for getting the lights, the lots striped, and getting the permit process done, I would say that, you know, industry is running the government in that case, whereas government should put the regulations on the industry. I mean, a business, I mean, I used to be a business owner, and I don't like a lot of regulations, but they're there. And when I had, I had a business at one time somewhere else, and I had to have handicap parking back in nineteen seventy-four, and that was their law. They didn't worry about whether I wanted to put it there or not, you know. I don't think we should worry about the striping companies or the businesses wanting to have it done in three days. I mean, to me, the government should set the standard like the law is. And also, another place that I was in, the papers I handed out the last time we had a work session, it said that all levels of government were responsible for enforcing it. It didn't just say the Department of Justice, because you know they're not gonna go out and enforce all over the whole country. But all levels of government are responsible for it. Just a minute, I'm looking through, and then the lot resurfacing is also in the ADA law. I don't think it's gonna be any problem to have an ordinance that requires a permit And that's all the comments I had. I just would like to see you have the permitting process, at least for the ones from now on. And it, I deal with it every day or every other day, going to places that don't have the access aisles. And my wife, I mentioned before, but she has a walker, she falls easily because she's got Parkinson's. I have to have the access aisle there to be able to get her out of the car safely and back in the car safely. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Melton. Are you aware of any local groups that help businesspeople or anyone do the right thing and understand what the, what the expectation is? do the right thing and understand what the, what the expectation is of people with disabilities? Anybody educating the community and business people and government?
Well, I'll just say that the places I have turned in, I have gone to them and asked them to do something about it, and explain that it's not according to ADA law.
But you don't know of any formalized group that makes this, like does seminars, does teaching moments, does, nothing?
No, I would do that if I had the opportunity. I think some people who have a speaker's bureau, like maybe Toastmasters, I'm in AARP, maybe some AARP people would volunteer. You know, I'm in that group, so I would volunteer to go speak to groups. I have gone in to talk to business people who have not been in compliance. And I have nearly not gotten any of them that I know of to really do anything about it. That, that's why I think then you need an ordinance to require it. Because the handicapped people are few, and a lot of them are weaker and older, and they can't go speak for themselves, or they don't want to, or, you know, they're, they're just to the point. A person that's handicapped that requires a wheelchair or a walker is really weaker in their assertiveness, too. And so that's why I think the city needs to do something about it for the sake of the handicapped people that want to live here. And it is an issue for me, dealing with it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions? Mr. Kaylin?
My name's Al Kaylin. I'm with Southern Ceiling and Striping. My striping person, Ken Cardwell, KMB Striping, he was not able to come tonight. He could answer a lot of these questions a lot better than I can, but we've talked throughout the day and have a few answers from what we've researched. First of all, Mr. Melton's point to the 11-foot wide van accessible spot that is on the ADA guidelines. Trying to find it here. There is an exception to that. And the exception says, I'm sorry, exception. Van parking spaces shall be permitted to be 96 inches wide minimum where the access aisle is 96 inches. So that goes back to Brent's eight and eight that he showed you guys. You know, the eight, eight-foot wide regular spot, eight-foot wide, what we call a hashed out area or an aisle, and then another eight-foot van accessible. So there is a, an exception to that in the ADA guidelines. Secondly, I don't think there are any businesses in town that would be against changing their parking to be compliant if they make the decision to seal and stripe their parking lot. No one is against going against these guidelines. People want to be compliant. And to Mr. Melton's point of removal of these handicap spots, yes, handicap spots do get removed. They get moved to another location if a lot is laid out differently. There are other places that have more handicap spots than what they are required to have. In that case, if they are pinched for parking, then they have removed parking spa, uh, handicap spots. And Brent said earlier, he had talked, and he talked to our striping contractor, and he talked to another contractor here in town. The point that he made that we go back and restripe identical to what it was before, that's about 95% true. The other ti, and that's just a wild guesstimate, but the other percentage of the time, they're trying to change the layout of the parking lot. In other words, it works better if they go with diagonal spots rather than straight in perpendicular spots. In that case, we still go back with the same number of required handicap spots. So I just want to make that clear, that you can change a striping layout after the parking lot is sealed. When, when those lots are, when a parking lot is resealed, you can see the profile of the handicap spot, you can see the profile of the parking lines. And a lot of times, that's what our striping company uses as a guideline to restripe that parking lot. So if the lot is changed, then of course, you're going, you're going to be able to see those old lines, you're going to be able to see the old square where the handicap stencil was located. Yeah, it'd be great for our business if everybody in Bowling Green went around having to reseal and stripe their parking lots. But I agree in a sense that if there is a complaint, then it does need to be addressed by someone. And we'd be more than willing to fix that. But also the point of every five years that a parking lot gets sealed and striped, that's not necessarily the case. That's, we would like for it to be every three to five years. Some people go 20 years and don't, all they do is restripe. And in that case, it's going to be difficult. You would have to reseal to change the striping. You're going to have old stripes, old lines, new lines, old everything, new everything, you're going to, it's just going to be a mess. So a lot of times when people want to change the layout of a parking lot, they will come in and seal it just so they can change that layout. But, you know, I don't think anyone's wanting, is doing this intentionally. Businesses do not intentionally, you know, turn a blind eye to ADA guidelines. And us as ceiling contractors, we go in and do what the business tells us to do. And unless they tell us that they would like to change something, it's just understood that we restripe it as it is. I don't know if that helps any, or if any of y'all have any more questions.
Questions from Mr. Kaylin? Thank you for coming in. Appreciate it. I believe there's a question on the board, wherever we want to go from here.
Let me, Bruce, to tell mine.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Melton? And remind, refresh my memory if I'm wrong. Have, have you, are, are you aware of anyone that has actually filed a complaint with the Department of Justice or even the Human Rights Commission, but to see what their reaction is? And here's my thought, is if you, if that has not been done, then obviously we don't know what their reaction would be. Therefore, maybe premature for us to do something thinking that they're not going to do something, when in reality, they haven't had the opportunity to do something. Does that make any sense to you?
Well, let me say, I did go to the Human Rights Commission that Mayor Wilkinson suggested last time. I've read about people who went to the Department of Justice, and it just takes forever. And I, I think that would be a dead end, that may be a last resort I have to go to. Now, I have written to Norb Ryan, that was suggested last time, too. And I, you know, the communication wasn't too good, I don't think. He said they're going to check it out in 90 days. Now, these are old places. These are not, you know, real new places. These are older places. But they're places that are obviously done, like I said, the mall was, you know. The Memorial Hospital's another, I mean, not Memorial, but Medical Center's another one. In the back where their outpatient facility is, they've got three or four lined up with no access aisle. Now, they have several parking spaces that are, that have the access aisles. But then they have about three or four at the end that are not, do not have an access aisle. And I'll go to the Department of Justice if I have to, but I don't have a lot of money to do that. And I think that, from what I read, and I can't find it right now, but I did read that all three levels of government are responsible for the law. That's the way, I think that was from the state of Kentucky. I want to point out something about the striping, too. I talked to one business owner to try to get him to change his handicap parking, and he said he just had it done, but the striper did it, and he wasn't aware of the ADA law, and he hasn't done anything about it since then either. But I have turned in several to Norb Ryan, and he is supposed to, he's the ADA coordinator for the state, and he's supposed to check on some of them within the next 90 days, he said, and that was from about the middle of December. I want to point out one thing for the restriping, too. In a lot of cases, it's not a big deal to restripe the whole parking lot. It's just a matter of, you know, one place that I think of, if they just took one spot out right by the handicap spot and put an access aisle crosshatch there, they have it done. It's not that expensive.
But they have, if I understand your, your comment, when they put their handicap spots in, they complied with the law at that time, did they not?
I don't know, because it, I don't know.
I guess the point I'm making is, what says they have to do anything different than what was already there, I guess? In other words, that's the part, Mr. Melton, that really bothers me. I guess the fact is that I, I don't know that we have the authority or want to take on the authority of telling everybody what they need to do to their lots. And Justice Department, Department of Justice carries guns, and we don't, and...
Well, this is another point. The state of Kentucky adopted the ADA law. Now, the comment a while ago was that they adopted ANSI standards. Well, I've read in the Kentucky Building Code that they adopted the ADA law, and there are a few differences. There's not a lot of differences, but there is a few differences. And so, you know, Kentucky is supposed to, I thought that our building department was supposed to follow Kentucky Building Code guidelines. Now, I can understand what you're saying, and I think that, like I said last time, if you all would start right now, I'd be happy. But there's some places out there that were just built within the last few years that are way past the 20 years ago.
Well, I don't think it's been said yet, but obviously you should be admired for bringing this issue forward. And for the grace of God, we all have this issue. Either us personally, it could happen to us, where we need handicap accessibility tomorrow. So it's not, that it's not an important issue. I think where, where I'm having an issue again is, if another entity is supposed to take care of this and they're not, then, then I can understand that. But I guess if they're not, if they've not been given the chance to take care of it, and I don't know if they would take care of it, I guess there's where I'm having an issue.
Well, the Kentucky Building Code says that they adopted the ADA law. So you wouldn't really have to go back, you know, the next place to go is Department of, Kentucky Building Code. And also the ADA coordinator. I'll have to just wait and see if he does anything about it. But that, that's older places. I'm talking about here, new places. I'd be satisfied, Bowling Green, if you start right now.
Brent, may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
If this is okay. Can you follow up, or, you've done a great job. I mean, you talked about parking lots and toilets, and you've done a great job here, I'll just have to tell you. But could you follow up with the Department of Justice or the, the Human Rights Commission, either locally or at the state level, and see what their reaction is? If you talk with the people from the Department of Justice, and they laugh at you and say, that's, that's not going to happen, then that may be another issue for us. But if it's something that they're just slow at doing, I think Mr. Melton said that Mr. Ryan would get back with them within 90 days. Is that something that you would be willing to do? Is ask them what their process is? Have they had any complaints filed here? What was their response to it? What could we expect their response to be? Because again, our population is getting older, and this is going to affect more and more people in the coming years. So I don't, you know, I don't want to belittle any of it by any means.
Right.
But I also want to know the whole gamut.
I'm willing to do whatever the commission wishes. Now, in going back and looking at, as I was saying previously, going back and looking at previous ADA lawsuits, there's plenty instances where they have filed lawsuit against small businesses, local businesses, for these types of issues, and, and larger types of issues. And to also speak to Mr. Melton's point of responsibility, I agree with him, we do have a responsibility. We are Title II entity under ADA. We're a public unit of local government. We have a responsibility to make sure that our sidewalks, that our roads, that our buildings, that our programs, that our facilities, to make sure that someone can access the weight room. We just took out the whirlpools in Parks and Rec because they weren't ADA accessible. So we do have that responsibility, and we take that very seriously. But I think that that responsibility stops with our internal facilities and programs outside of the issue here on parking lots. But I'll be glad to follow up with the Department of Justice to get a better understanding of, of what their process is.
Well, that's where, if the members of the board would be okay with that, that's where I'd like, it says, where do we go from here? That's where I would like to see us go and get that information back.
Especially the Kentucky man, whatever his title is, what his suggestions would be.
Do you want that in form of another work session, or in a presentation and talk about bathrooms, or just in a memo form to kind of lay out my investigation with the Department of Justice?
See, your challenge would be to leave off the bathroom.
I've got to make an analogy somewhere.
I'm only kidding. I thought that was a good analogy.
I'm trying to explain federal regulations. You got to make an analogy in here somewhere.
Actually, I thought that was pretty good. I would just, again, I don't want to see us burdening the businesses with another permitting process if it is not absolutely, positively the last resort, maybe. But I'm just saying, I want to, I left myself open, didn't I?
Yeah.
I wouldn't be opposed to it, maybe, is what I'm saying. But I want to make sure that everything else, that every other alternative has been pursued. And I, I think we're missing the piece from what the Department of Justice would do. I don't know, Mr. Melton, file a complaint with, you've already talked to the one gentleman, maybe that's the equivalent of filing a complaint, but file an official complaint and see how far it goes and see what response you get.
Well, my complaint was filed to Norb Ryan, the state ADA coordinator, and...
And again, maybe, again, take a, see, that's where I'm confused as well, is if the process is to do, is to file a complaint with the Department of Justice, is what you did talking to that person, is that equivalent to filing a complaint? File a complaint and see what happens.
Well, the state Building Code has adopted the ADA. So the state, I think definitely, is the next person to go to. I'm trying to go from the local to the federal government. I don't want to go straight to the Department of Justice, because I think it's very slow anyway. But that's why I went to the state next, because they have adopted the state, the ADA law that the Department of Justice has.
Well, again, it's an important issue. I just want to make sure that we, that, that all the steps have been taken that need to be taken under the present way it's done. And then if that's not done, or Brent finds out that the Department of Justice is not going to do anything about this, then maybe we come back and revisit it.
Sure.
One, that I failed to mention earlier, there are handicapped, there are business, I almost say businesses. There are churches in town, the medical center may be another one, where they have more handicap spots than what they're required to have. For instance, a church on Sunday, one of these big churches here in town, they, they ask for more handicap spots because they require more handicap spots because of the attendance of their, their church members. They, we just slap them in there without an aisle, because they have, we're installing more handicap spots than what they already have. That's not a real common thing, but that does happen. So if there are certain places, large places, maybe the medical center, I don't know, I've not counted the number of handicap spots there. But if you see spots, several handicap spots together without the aisle, that may be the reason, that they have actually requested more handicap spots just for a person that doesn't require an aisle way. You know, they, they have a medical condition that they just, they need a shorter walk, maybe. So that is, that is one thing that I failed to mention earlier. And also, to the permit, as Brent stated, there are two, three responsible contractors in town that do this work. And we, I don't think it requires a permit. We would do our due diligence to make sure that people know what the, what these rules are and, and explain to the customer, look, you know, this is what it needs to be. It's up to them to whether or not they do it. But, but I think getting a permit is overburdening for, for a business like ours that is, it's very time sensitive. Seven, seven months out of the year, and, you know, someone might close, they might be open on Saturdays. You know, a business pretty much needs to be... You know, a business pretty much needs to be closed for us to do this work unless it's a place like the mall where you can, it's so massive that you can separate it out and set into sections. And so, the business, say there's a bank that is open on Saturday, they decide last minute, for whatever reason, they're going to close tomorrow, and this is a Friday afternoon at three-thirty. Can you come and seal our parking lot and stripe it this weekend? Well, no, because we don't, we don't have time to get a permit, you know, and I understand, we'll do our due diligence to make sure that these lots, or that the owners of the lots know what the guidelines are. But, you know, ultimately, it's up to them if they want to abide by the ADA rules. It shouldn't be up to them, I mean, you know, but if it's explained to them properly, I believe that they'll all, you know, fall in line. Because honestly, many of the property owners, they don't know about these aisle ways. What they know about is making sure they have the proper number of handicap spots that are required, so.
It seems like this is good business, obviously, if they want to comply with this so that their customers can have access.
Sure.
Again, I just want to make sure that we exhaust all other avenues before we take on another permit, another part of the process here.
Right. That sounds good.
Just my thoughts.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate your willingness to work with the businesses and explain to them. Before we move forward, why don't we, do we have anything on our website that we could say, business owners, if you're thinking of restriping, please consider this. Talk to your resealing, restriping person. Make sure you're meeting the needs of our handicapped citizens.
I mean, honestly, in the past, you know, we just, they tell us to seal and stripe the parking lot, we go in and seal it and restripe it as it is. And, you know, I know our company and the other companies in town be more than happy to do a little bit more as far as educating the business owners when they do decide to seal and stripe the parking lot.
And I'm not sure that we could not use a process where if someone like, a citizen like Mr. Melton has an issue, they contact somebody in city government, and city government lodges the complaint with the Department of Justice. You know, I don't know, but I think one thing that this has all brought out is the attention that this is getting. I think Melinda's suggestion is very good, more education, and if something, if it continues, that's usually when government ends up acting, when people don't want them to, with extra permits and other processes. And as long as people comply willingly, then obviously government would not have to do that.
Right.
So, maybe there's attentional help in what Melinda talked about education, maybe that would help as well.
Sure, I hope so.
Mr. Dunning?
Uh, Mr. Kalen, as a part of your education to the owners of respective properties, could you have a sign-off sheet maybe to where you have told this owner that is re-stiping and so on, about the ADA standards and so on and so on?
What, that might be a little too much because of the way that we communicate with the customers. Now, what we could do is make, you know, and this might be too much as well, but maybe make copies, I'm just throwing out ideas, make copies of the ADA rules and give them to the business owner. You know, whether or not they read it, I don't know, but we'll explain to them that this is, you know, this is really being paid attention to now, and, you know, they really need to abide by it.
And that is something you need to give to them before you start your work, right?
Yes.
I think if you simply bring it to their attention, like you just said.
Right.
That'll go a long way.
Yeah, I'm not for too much paperwork and shuffling around papers and, you know, then somebody, you know, we're really good contractors here in this town, us and the other couple that are here, and, you know, we care about it. We're just not out there, you know, like these guys that come into town every summer from out of town and rip off people by sealing their driveways without, you know, we've been here a long time. We, we're not trying to make any shortcuts here, so. Anything else? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kalen. Anything else, any other items to be brought before the commission and the work session? Thank you for your time, we'll be back at seven o'clock for our regular meeting.